2019, Board of Trustees, Village of Cambridge Meeting to Order.
Public hearing first?
Well, I'm just following the order here.
It's a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yep.
All right, public hearing. We're gonna get into the budget here.
Yeah, proof of posting and stuff.
Yeah, first we'll do, well, trustee Christensen.
Here. Here.
Uh, here.
Brian Ick.
Here.
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 Here. Okay. Public hearing.
Proof of posting, it was posted upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, Hometown Bank, the Village website. It was also published in the Cambridge News.
All right. Now.
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 Public hearing, 2020 budget.
I can tell that Barb, and in your packet in the front is just a, oh, it's it backed by the budget stuff. It's kind of the, it's the handouts, a spreadsheet and...
So you should have this spreadsheet, and then behind it, excuse me, are the individual budget account breakouts. So the spreadsheet first and then these details.
Lisa, do you have the sheet to sign up on bills?
To do both, sign a sheet. Oh, no. Um, we'll get it printed.
So, as an overview of the budget, what's presented to you is a balanced budget. General fund have revenues of a million one ninety-one five twenty-four. Of that is seven hundred and sixty-five thousand forty-one dollars of property tax levy. The expenses on the general fund are one million one ninety-one five twenty-four as well. Debt service levy is three hundred and fifty-eight, and you can follow along on the bottom column of that spreadsheet that you have. The debt service levy is five hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars, which is up two thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars over last year. The library levy is eighty thousand dollars, and that's five thousand over last year. Refuge and recycling levy amount is ten thousand one hundred and ten dollars, and that is actually down nineteen thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars over last year's levy, and that is due through the new contract. So the total property tax levy that will be placed on the tax roll is one million two hundred thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That is the allowable levy increase of seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars for the village over last year. That is all we are allowed to increase for our levy due to the levy limit requirements by the state. Within the budget, the one item that the Audit and Finance Committee had determined at the end of their last meeting to change was the amount of the fire and EMS budget. The share requested for the Village of Cambridge was twenty-seven thousand six hundred and three dollars, as per the agreement that we have based on equalized value. At the end of the Audit and Finance Committee, they had determined to place two thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars in that line item, which is the village's portion of the operating and maintenance portion of the entire budget, as we understood it at that time. The remaining twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars has been placed in the village's Streets Capital Outlay Account, which is for repairs, street repairs and maintenance for 2020. And an additional one thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars was added to projected revenues in order to balance the budget. So, at this time, that is the budget that is presented to the board to consider for approval tonight, and at this time is the public hearing for any input from the public, et cetera.
Okay, we'll start here with the board before we get to any questions, anything that we have here from Board Trustees, questions?
Just a small question.
And actually, the board will be discussing this in our normal...
Right, I think this is just for the public.
This is the public input.
Yep.
So if public has input or questions, but the board will be discussing it, um, as we get into our regular agenda.
All right. Questions?
Is there any public that wishes...
Any public that wish to speak on it?
Are you here to speak on the budget?
Nope, nope. So, no public comment on the budget? All right. Motion to adjourn.
All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing for the budget.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, that meeting is adjourned.
Right on then.
Okay, now we'll get into the normal meeting of the Board of Trustees. Roll call, please.
Trustee Cunningham.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Brian Ick.
Here.
Holland Beck.
Here.
Cumbier.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
McNally.
Here. Okay, if we can rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Lisa, Barb, can you tell us if this meeting has been properly posted?
It was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, Hometown Bank, and the Village website.
Okay, all right. Public appearances. Jay, I know what you're here for. Mike, the back row.
Yeah, my name is Mike Bradler with the Dancing Goat Distillery, and I brought two of my colleagues with me, Nick Moss and Bo Bunce. Nick is the VP of Distillation and Innovation, one of our owners, and Bo is just joining our team, coming over as the Director of Marketing. So I've been telling him about my time coming and sitting with you guys here, and wanted to introduce him to you guys before we have any other conversations, but those who are required have to story, and I would like to thank you for letting us come and join today.
Thank you, nice to meet you, and welcome to Cambridge.
All right, I see a couple of folks over here, any comments? No, you're just waving. All right, okay. Moving on.
Do you want to do a motion to move item eight A up? Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to move item eight A to current.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, we have the Cambridge Tree Project proclamation, and it's advocate, and we have something for you this evening, Jay. But before we do that, just any observations that you'd like to share regarding what you've been doing here and what this might represent?
Well, thank you for the recognition, I appreciate it. Establishing one thousand trees over the past thirteen years across the village, official trees could not have come without support. And I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge that, starting with the village, village staff, elected officials. Many of you have been here for quite a while while we've been planting trees. My first call to the village regarding trees was to Larry thirteen years ago. I had ten trees, I wanted to know if he would plant them, he said he would. The next year, it was twenty trees. The third year, we had a successful tree sale, and we had enough stock to donate a lot more trees. So I called Larry, and I asked him realistically, how many trees can you plant? And he said, what, what do you have? And I told him, it's around a hundred trees, and he didn't hesitate at all. He said, let's do it.
Wow.
Larry and one other person, or other people, Public Works Directors, with one other person planted roughly eighty trees a year for the past twelve years. Lisa, you know, we, thankfully, we had the ability to plant that many trees and the willingness. The question was, would we have the traction over an extended period of time? And in working with you and the effectiveness you bring to your role in the community, I had the confidence that we could do this for a sustained period of time. So about a hundred trees a year, twelve years, we could plant a tree in every single open spot throughout the village. That is where a thousand trees came from. We had a thousand openings, and we had the willingness and the ability to plant trees at the village level. Village residents, and I know not everybody loves trees, but I wondered just how supportive the village has been of the tree project, and I was actually able to look at the numbers. There are about five hundred parcels of property throughout the village where you can plant a tree. I was able to match those parcels up with tree project records, and today, two of three village parcels have a tree project tree growing on the property. That is an appetite for planting trees. I talk with friends and forestry circles, and people can't believe the appetite for planting trees in Cambridge. So with the appetite, and with traction and the willingness, I thank those who were involved, and most importantly, from the bottom of my heart, I thank my family, my amazing wife, Chris, and my incredible daughter, Lily, who have put up with me talking about trees for almost twenty years. And you were at the tree sales, year after year, and there was rain, and snow, and ice, and cold. There were also nice spring days, and there was hot chocolate and coffee, and there were smiles, and there was community. And the two of you brought hospitality to this equation and made it fun, and made me look forward to it more than anything just about all year. And other people were coming back because it was fun. So I feel very fortunate to have such a great, loving, and supportive family. I feel very fortunate to live in a village that has such an appetite for planting trees. So, if we ever get disappointed in Cambridge, you know, something's not going your way, or doesn't look right, or there's a change coming around the corner, think of a thousand. Because there are at least a thousand reasons to be impressed with our community, and I couldn't be happier to call myself a village resident.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
I'm gonna read this proclamation, and then I will present it to you, all right? Village of Cambridge Proclamation, recognition of Cambridge Tree Project with Jay Weiss. Whereas Cambridge Tree Project planted its one thousand living tree on June eleventh, two thousand nineteen, whereas Jay Weiss created the Cambridge Tree Project due to concerns about the predominance of ash and maple trees in Cambridge with a goal to plant a thousand trees by two thousand and twenty. And whereas he wanted to increase the variety and species of trees in Cambridge to ensure a strong, healthy, and diverse canopy for years to come. Whereas in two thousand and four, seventy percent of public trees in the village were ash and maple, and we had thirty-five species, we now have over one hundred and fifty species, and only twenty-one percent ash and maple. And whereas the Cambridge Tree Project holds two annual tree sales and proceeds help landscape Cambridge schools, streets, and parks, and whereas Jay Weiss has completed the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Tree Management Institute, and in conjunction with the village has done educational projects such as wrapping ash trees on village property to demonstrate how the Emerald Ash Bore could affect our community. And whereas the project has donated about one thousand two hundred trees for Cambridge public spaces, and an additional three thousand trees have been sold to private property owners in and around Cambridge, thus adding over four thousand trees to the Cambridge area. And whereas, due to the dedication of Jay Weiss, the Cambridge Tree Project and village staff, the Village of Cambridge has received the designation of Tree City USA for thirteen years, as well as receiving the Tree City USA Growth Award through the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now, therefore, I, Mark McNally, President of the Village of Cambridge, do recognize Jay Weiss and the Cambridge Tree Project for their dedication to the Village of Cambridge and the lasting effect they will have on the Village of Cambridge, making this a wonderful community to live, play, work, and raise a family in, dated this twenty-sixth day of November, two thousand nineteen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jay.
All right. Jay, I have a box if you would like it for that, and I should have brought it with me.
Thank you, Mark.
Usually this is the part where you say speech, but you've already given one, so.
Eric Whitworth was the person who discovered EAB in our village, and promptly told me about it. We were able to get an early start to everything.
Still losing trees, though.
All right, thank you for coming by.
Thanks, Jake, you.
Thank you for the recognition.
And enjoy the holiday. Okay, moving back to number five, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Discussion necessary? Okay, hearing, so all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that passes. All right. Reports, I'll lead off. A couple of things. First off, the economic development, we did have a meeting, and we're off and running. The, let's see, Dave with Ace Hardware was there, we had Christiane with Avid Gardner, Karen was just there, she wasn't a part of the board or anything like that. Dave Middlestat was there, I was there, and then Steve Fiori was there, so we had a turnout, was there any, did I miss anybody? No, so those are the five members. We went through kind of where we had left off back in, I don't know, that must have been like two thousand and seven or something like that?
The economic development plan we've been working on was from two thousand and twelve.
Okay.
Study done in two thousand and twelve.
All right, there were about four things that we did agree to do. Number one, we have a TIF district, we're going to, Lisa and I will sit down and just talk about that, and I'll give you a report, because I have to go back to the Economic Committee and share that with them as far as what that means. Number two, and this is already going on, we were going to be talking with a couple of property owners about possibly putting in pop-ups, but that has already started. And there is a local resident who is at work on that, so we don't have to do that, we'll see how that goes, but we were gonna approach a couple of owners just to see if there wasn't anything that we could do for this retail season.
Is that what Sheila's running with?
Barbie?
Sheila's doing that? She's doing a great job.
Yeah.
And she's posting on the Cambridge Community site regularly as to what's going on, so it looks really great.
The next item, there is a thought that perhaps we could have more interaction with the residents that are on the lake, not in the town of Oakland, but just on the lake, with the village. And maybe we could, we could cross-pollinate, so we're gonna try to make some introductions there and get a couple of people that could help out, and see if there's anything that they could do that we could benefit from, or we could do and they could benefit from. And then, lastly, we want to go back and look at the goals that were part of that last economic development plan, and prioritize those, see which ones we want to keep. So, we've got another meeting scheduled, I want to say it's the third week in January, somewhere around there, so we're off and running. The next item, and I mentioned it at the last meeting, but this is the week of Thanksgiving, and Willerup is having a happy Friendsgiving dinner this week on Thursday. So if you are out there, and in television land, or anybody else here for that matter, but starting at eleven-thirty, they're gonna have food and fellowship at Willerup, and you can call them at six oh eight four two three three seven seven seven. So, that's my, that's my president's report. Moving on, Water Sewer Stormwater Committee.
We had a short meeting last Tuesday, we got an update, they're starting to, they're just starting to pull well number three, pull the casings and stuff like that, and I haven't heard anything of what's going on with that yet. That was about it for the meeting.
Okay.
And once well number three is completed, we'll go to well number two.
All right. Questions? Okay, moving on, Library Board?
We met, went through the reports, the Friends of the Library Craft Fair was very successful again this year, so they're excited, and they've already got a bunch of people signed up for next year, so that's gonna be another good thing for the library. Strategic planning, that's kind of on hold until we get into March timeframe. I think we'll probably be picking back up that strategic planning and having the consultant we're working with help us send. We looked at audit information, Joan shared some information about restricted and unrestricted funds. It's kind of probably a mess, kind of is what it sounded like because of all of our treasures, as to, we think there's supposed to be certain money into different areas that, I don't know that Barb, you were reflecting in what Workhorse was currently reflecting. So Joan was gonna come back to you and take a look at some of that. I think the total dollar amount is right, it's just that may not be in the right categories, and so I think that's what we need to take a look at, between restricted and unrestricted funds. And then, we took a look and approved the library budget that we had, and... I don't know that there's anything else really of importance, Patty? Oh, yes, so in December, the Linkcat system is going to be updated, and so beginning at nine AM on December sixth, and through December tenth, perhaps beyond that, but through December tenth for certain, you will not be able to use the Linkcat system to put holds on library books, and the library staff will not be able to use that system to put the holds on library books as well. You can use anything in the library, check out books that are in the library, it's just that, that integration we have with the South Central system, that stuff is on hold while they're updating the computer systems. So, we're hoping that by December tenth, everything will be back to normal. Feel free to still come and use the library, because the library is still usable, it's just that integration with the South Central that will be on hold for that period of time, from December sixth until the, through the ninth, through the tenth, hopefully. All right, I think that was it. Anything else, Patty? All right.
All right, thank you. Village Office Updates.
Barb and I have been busy working on budget stuff, tax bill preparation, levy limit worksheets, all of that stuff, the special assessments are being entered in to go to the county, so that stuff's taken up a lot of time. Trash and recycling, we just received word, it looks like the new bins are going to be delivered to town the week of December ninth.
Where do you ask for bigger ones for the recycling?
Everybody got the larger size unless they requested smaller.
Okay, thank you.
So we will have a staging area, they'll bring them in, distribute them to the households. The last pickup from Advanced will be December sixth, twenty-sixth. They will then follow with the truck to pick up the bins. They don't make it all the way through town that day, they'll come the following day. I will work with them to see if people are out of town for the holidays and so forth, how those will get picked up. There will be about a week and a half before the new, our new pickups will be on Monday. So with the holiday, it will be picked up on Thursday, and it will then be a week and a half until the first pickup for the Monday, the first of the new year. So we'll continue working with them on that. Hard-to-believe election stuff, notices have gone to the paper already, I did hand out today packets. That side of the table is all up. Nomination papers can be done beginning December first, but this is our last meeting before then, so packets are available in the village offices for anybody who is interested in Village Board. We did apply for and receive a six hundred dollar grant through the Wisconsin Elections Commission, through their security program. We had put down for some training and purchase of a new laptop that we can use at the desk for registrations, absentee voting, and then have it down here during, on Election Day as well, for registrations and so forth. So that will be coming through in conjunction with these training. There was a two-day Presidential Election Academy up in Green Bay that both Barb and I attended last week for that. I have been working with Attorney Bailey on the revised chamber contract, that will be on the next agenda. We have had discussions with the new auditors, set dates with them, when they'll be coming, they'll be working with the transition with Baker Tilly as well. Meister Saitz, the test results have been submitted to the DNR, we are expecting to be hearing from them very shortly on that.
One question for you, have you heard from Public Works how the expansion of their building is going? Everything going okay?
They have ordered everything for the lean to.
Some of it's up.
Yeah, they've been working with London Lumber. So, I have not heard of any problems, so I'm assuming it's all going well. I knew it had all been ordered, and...
Any other question?
Okay, thank you, Lisa. We're supposed to discuss bills, and I'm wondering if we can move a couple of items in the agenda around to give Barb enough time to be able to go upstairs to get that form that we have to sign off on. I would suggest that we move the liquor license application for Lilybird and the DNR application.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move items eight D and eight E up to current.
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna move these items up, we can discuss that, Barb will get that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Lisa, the liquor license application for Lilybird.
Yep, that is for the Avid Gardener, it would be a Class A liquor license, so not for on-premise consumption, but to take away.
And her intention, I just talked to Christiane about this, her intention is to sell wine, and it will be wine, the distributor that she's working with works with smaller, family-owned vineyards to sort of bring in, you know, that smaller hometown, local kind of feel. It's wine that isn't being really sold at other places in town, so she's going after that sort of unique business. So I think it'll be another good add for the village.
Is that gonna be downstairs in the basement then?
I think that, I think she's storing it downstairs.
Yeah, storage is downstairs.
Storage is downstairs, but she'll have it up on her, on her main floor for sale, I would think.
So she can make up gift baskets and things and add that in?
Yep.
Is that okay?
Okay. All righty. I don't know.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license application for Lilybird.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license application for Lilybird. I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the application approval for Lilybird, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, looks like that one is carried. All right. Pending Department of Natural Resources application for proposed changing of the stream course. Lisa.
I had received the notice, that's in your paper, the one-page notice as did a budding residence to the property. Nobody really knew what it meant. What's going on here? I did talk to the DNR. I printed off all the stuff from their website. It's, you know, ream of papers worth of information. I did talk to Todd Schultz, who had been before Plan Commission for the proposed TIF. He, as the owner of the property, has contacted the Department of Natural Resources. Because of the wetlands up there, there, for that property, there is no entrance onto, into the property from 1218 because of the wetlands. They are looking at moving a stream.
Is that down in Creek?
Or, not the creek itself, a drainage ditch that's along Highway 1218. It would go more at an angle toward the drainage ditch between the gas station and the subway property. So it's just, it's moving the drainage ditch so that there is an entrance into that property that DOT would allow an entrance. Residents have spoken to, it's made clear, no plans have been submitted, nothing has been approved for that property. But as property owners, it is their right to request this from the DNR so that they have access to their property.
Well, because every time we've talked about doing something on that property beforehand, we'll pack the room. Because people get upset that, you know, their basements might start flooding.
Yeah.
And I think that that area should be modeled and everything else by an engineer to make sure that does not happen.
Yeah, and that's all stuff that will have to come before the board, before anything. You know, right now, they have the request to the DNR. There is a timeframe where people can give comments, concerns, ask for a public hearing. I wanted the board to be aware that this is out there. So we weren't blindsided down the line, but...
If the DNR makes this, is there really anything we have to say about it if the DNR decides it's okay?
We could submit comments. Again, all they are doing is looking at the relocation of that drainage ditch.
Okay, all right.
Not of anything being built there or anything else.
Yeah, that I understand.
And, like I said, as a property owner, it's their right to ask so that they have entrance into a parcel. But, but as neighboring property owners, they received the notice and the village received the notice. So if the village would like to submit comments, they can. But again, it is strictly on the relocation of the drainage ditch, not of a development.
So there isn't really, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I guess for comment, for their particular application, both number three as, and number seven states, number seven, the question is, are there other factors you would like us to consider during our alternative analysis evaluation? And the response is, the Village of Cambridge recognizes that this is a keystone property for the expansion of the village, and has created a tax incremental district to facilitate its development.
I was going to contact, I'm trying to think if I did send an email or, I was going to contact them to let them know that that is inaccurate. That we have not created a TIF, we have not, you know, nothing has been proposed that we have supported.
Right.
At this point.
Okay. It states that in question number three, as well as question number seven.
And thank you, Dean, for your questions.
And then Eric, you can ask about the cart before the horse.
Yeah, I was a bit taken aback that this request didn't at least go to Plan Commission first. It seems like they're trying to get the watershed moved before they can tell them what they're going to build there. I was just, I don't understand it, but I know that you're not going to have an answer for me, just...
Yeah, and Plan Commission would have no control over the drainage ditch that is a DNR.
Well, they would have say in what goes in there. I was just looking at them.
But there's nothing been proposed yet.
Nothing has been proposed.
I know.
So... I suppose they can't do a proposal unless they know they have an entrance way and where that entrance way is and...
Nothing's been proposed, but they say Lot 1 is important.
So where do they want the entrance to go in?
So that weird triangle piece of land?
Yes, yeah.
Right across from that.
I'm having orientation, I'm having trouble with the orientation of this.
That weird triangle piece of property on 1218.
Yeah, the maps aren't real clear.
No.
Where 134 comes down, it would kind of be across from 134.
Okay. So it'd be across from 134, so that would be an intersection there?
Right before the Shell Station.
Yeah.
But that's going to create a problem. There's a lot of traffic in that area.
And that's DOT issue.
Yeah.
That's not our issue.
That's right.
So they're working through their entrance into with the state before coming to us. I have talked to Todd Schultz. I'm hoping to meet with him in the near future. We haven't been able to meet yet. But, yeah. Unfortunately, navigable waters in the highway are the state, not us.
And the wetlands.
Wetlands.
It's a big deal.
And in addition to the wetlands, you have the overhead utilities which then restrict the entrance into that parcel.
And when, when he did propose the last development, most of the...
It was, it was a TIF that was proposed. The development, you know, there was a draft.
Right.
But the TIF was what was before us.
But most of the people here were concerned about water issues.
Yeah.
And so maybe he's trying to get ahead of, this is how we're going to do the water issues if we come with something else. Just a guess.
Yeah.
I think that's a really good idea to discuss the water issues before we do.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it was brought to our attention, and I researched it on my own, that the company, Cambridge Real Estate Ventures LLC, is listed as being delinquent by the Department of Financial A delinquent company is, if they don't get their paperwork up to date, subject to being dissolved, not on their own accord, so...
That date is as of July 1st, 2008.
July 1st.
Is that, is that a administrative issue that can be, that can be taken care of?
It can be, yes.
And paid with.
And of paying of the fee.
Yeah.
But it says something about the company to allow their license to go delinquent, in my opinion.
They're just concerned about that.
Yeah. Just saying.
And again, something we can consider if they bring a plan before us.
Which is nothing to do with moving a ditch.
Right. Yep.
We'll just, yeah, keep it in mind.
Like I said, I, I received this, and some residents didn't have questions, so I wanted to bring it to your attention so we're all aware that they are still looking at doing something with that land.
Do we, do we need to at least respond to the, to the DO, to the, I'm sorry, who they sent in?
DNR.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the DNR. Do we need to at least respond to the DNR and let them know that we as a village are very concerned with drainage issues because we've had, we've had drainage issues off of that property before? So if there are any changes, we're going to want to make sure that the current property residents that have flooded from runoff of that area would not be affected. So we need to make sure that that is absolutely studied before an approval would be granted. I think a minimum statement of that from the village would be important.
And the comment that we have not approved the TIF.
Right, yes, okay.
That's why it needs to be modeled first.
Yep.
Do you feel comfortable writing that letter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Any other observations? There's not much we can do on this. All right. Okay. Let's see here. Moving back, do we want to do bills now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we have bills in the amount of $48,562.41.
Make a motion to approve the bills in that amount. Second.
Okay. All right, motion's been made in second. Any questions? All right, we have a voice vote.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Trustee Whitworth.
Yes.
Ryanek.
Yes.
Holland Beck.
Yes.
Tim Beer.
Yes.
Chriskinson.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
McNell.
Yes. Okay. Moving back, Village of Cambridge Resolution 2019, adopt, dash 12, adopting the 2020 Annual Village Operating Budget. Is this Barb or Lisa?
I don't know if there's questions from...
Small question. What kind of fringes does the president get?
The president receives $309 a month, and then the same as board members, $40 for village board meetings, $20 for committee meetings.
But there's a headline in there that says fringe benefits, $284 a year.
Oh, that's the FICA and so forth off of...
FICA and Medicare taxes?
Oh, so his are done differently than the rest of us?
No, it may be it's just a separate line item, president versus trustees. They're all run through payroll, all have that same. The only difference is $309 a month.
The others are listed as legislative.
Legislative, rather than president.
Okay, because it says president fringe benefits.
Yep, and legislative is...
At the very top of that page.
Yeah, as all of us run together?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Thought maybe you were getting pensioned or something.
Quite.
Spend it all in one place.
Yeah, yeah. Other questions? I have one. I noticed that our building permits, what we're proposing is $28,413. And we give 80% of that back to Mr. Finley, correct? I was looking at this tonight, actually, on the way here. And what I was wondering, if that is 80%, if we go over to General Government on page four, that amount that we've allocated for the inspections is $15,000. So it doesn't seem to be 80%, because that would be about $22,400.
In addition to expenses, there, are there other?
I was not aware of the 80%. So the budget calculation I did was based on past history. So I guess I, I just didn't know there was a different, a formula per se I was following what's been done.
Yeah, he, we receive, he receives a percentage, and I'm trying to look where...
You said it's on page four, eight, and so many instructions.
Yeah, there are different areas that does not have anything there, the inspections.
Are part of his costs underneath contracts? You know, contracted services?
Some of, some of his are, some of his payment, depending on meetings he attends and so forth, come out of different areas too. But yes, we do give him a percentage, and I can't say exactly if it's 20%, but, yeah, 80. I'll stick to, I'd have to look. I'd have to go back and look.
Is it 18, 1937? 1928? I apologize for not recognizing that.
And, and I didn't catch it either. Some of those revenues come in, coming in to, are paying for the permits, the state reporting and things to, some of the revenues.
709?
Yeah, I think the expenses and some of the...
I mean, I realize it's just a budget item. You know, we're not... So is it, can we still pass this then, you know, with that?
You can, because it's, what you're looking at is the bottom line. There will be adjustments throughout the year. Sometimes you'll need to actually make a budget amendment to, to make some of those adjustments. But for the intents and purposes tonight, we were only allowed to increase our levy limit by $17,532. The way that breaks out can be adjusted at a later time.
Okay.
So the, the budget and levy presented to you, you're okay in passing the way that it is because that's all you can increase it, and that's what you're doing.
And that's that, that first cover sheet has the breakdowns. We are not, as Barb said, approving line by line by line. It is the bottom lines of each, of the categories that...
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Paula, you're head of Audit and Finance, any observations?
It was a very difficult year. Barb mentioned earlier the adjustment that we made in the EMS and fire and EMS dollar. I don't know how that's going to play out, but that was our recommendation, and I think that's how, I think the board is in agreement to pass in the budget with, by increasing the, and agreeing to pay that operational portion. But the portion of our share that's going to go into reserves, we had serious questions on. And so that's the budget that we, that's what these dollars reflect. Now, again, this is just a bottom line number, and things will change as we go through the year, but that's where we set, I think there's, I, I think in the future, it would be really great if the fire and EMS changed their budgeting process to allow municipalities, the five municipalities, a little more say, or a little more input into what they're budgeting and how they're budgeting it. It, right, it, it seems like the budget comes out to the members of the commission, and they're, they're given that week to preview it, but they're given the opportunity to bring it back to the boards, their individual boards, before they're asked to vote on and approve it in, in that commission. And I don't know that that is, the Audit and Finance Committee doesn't know, because this isn't just me. I think everyone on the Audit and Finance Committee agreed that we have concerns about that process because we feel like we don't have any input into it. I think everyone on the Audit and Finance Committee agreed that we have concerns about that process because we feel like we don't have any input into it. I don't know, Chris, if you want to, or Eric, if you want to add anything?
I think that, you know, in, in times past, we, we get painted into a corner where we just have to accept it because it's already voted on. And whereas we would like to have a little bit of leverage in saying, this particular line item, we don't agree with. Can you please go back to the fire commission and say, let's talk about this, as opposed to, here you go. Here's what we voted on.
Provide a little bit more detail on what, it was a bit difficult to read through their budget to figure out what was going on.
And I still believe there's some outstanding questions that weren't, weren't answered, that we're still waiting on answers for, so.
Well.
We weren't provided documentation.
Okay.
They, they sent an email with, Bob Seloff sent an email with response to questions, but when I requested documentation from Gene Kapsner, I didn't get any reply on that verbally and haven't received anything.
Well, I've already got it as part of the agenda for the meeting next Wednesday, December fourth. I will be talking with the commission about the, the due dates because I went back and I looked at the agreement and that was originally written in nineteen fifty-one and it's been updated as recently as last year. And it states that they are supposed to have a rough budget done by September first with a final budget to be voted on by October first. Well, we didn't get anything until October ninth, so we should at least have something and I want to bring that up along with some other concerns as well. So that will happen.
We do have a couple notes.
I just, I wanted to add to a couple of things, you know, my statement earlier about the budget that was requested by fire and EMS and the, the village, currently the Audit and Finance Committee at their last meeting. So the fire and EMS budget requested share was twenty-seven thousand six oh three. So the Audit and Finance Committee placed two thousand five hundred and forty-eight in that budget line item. The remaining of the amount had been placed in the capital outlay and then we projected additional revenues in order to, to take care of that amount in full. So if the board were to decide to fund their entire request of the twenty-seven thousand, that would wipe out any street outlay for the village for repairs and maintenance for two thousand twenty. So we wouldn't have anything in that budget. The other thing is, you know, there was, we were told by Mr. Seloff at a prior village board meeting, I think it was either November twelfth or the one prior to that, that the hundred thousand dollar increase in the fire and EMS budget was for reserves. It has since been brought to our attention that that was not correct. Only fifty thousand of the hundred thousand increase was for reserves, to add to reserves, to help them pay for equipment, et cetera. You know, so that, that was a mistake. My taking that from his word at that meeting and then later apparently was not correct. They corrected it.
I think we all had the impression when he was here saying fifty thousand was new and fifty thousand was replenishing the fifty that was given the year before. In talking to him after, he said, no, we weren't putting fifty back, but we're making up because we gave, you know, but when he was here, it came across to us very clearly that fifty was replenishing and fifty thousand new.
Correct. For reserves.
That's how I took it.
Yep.
And part of the difficulty in, in my budget process, I felt it was my due diligence to bring to the Audit and Finance Committee and the village board the questions that I had about the budget that was presented from them. There seemed to be places where I, I wanted more information. My due diligence, I feel, and my job is to go back and ask those questions and try to get the detail.
And we appreciate that.
And Mr. Seloff did answer those questions in an email, but I was not provided documentation that I had talked about. The difficulty is with this, their request of twenty-seven thousand is ten thousand dollars over what we're even allowed to increase by our levy limit, you know, so we have to find those monies elsewhere in the budget. And it also doesn't allow us to try to increase anything in our budget, which we experience increases in various numbers of things. Utilities, health insurance benefits, various number of things, costs keep going up and the village has to figure out how to cover those when our levy is already used up on one line item and then some. The additional part to that is their increase alone in expenses was about six percent on our end. And we are only allowed to go three percent over all of our expenditures in order to still qualify for expenditure restraint for two thousand twenty. So in essence, we removed twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars from our revenue side because we won't qualify for expenditure restraint for two thousand twenty. I tried every which way I could to figure out a way to make that work, but we would have needed to find an additional thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget in expense side to get rid of in order just to qualify for that.
How much would that be? How much are we losing?
Twenty-five thousand dollars in expenditure restraint.
Okay.
So at this point, you know, so I removed that revenue. We were blessed with a, an adjustment to the police budget that totaled nearly ten thousand dollars, which helped to offset that. And then there were other adjustments made and found within the budget to, to make it balance. You know, we just made it balance by reducing other things. So in essence, we're losing that twenty-five thousand. If we take, if we give the additional to come up to the total of twenty-seven thousand, which we understand in the agreement that all five municipalities have to levy what the fire commission approves, you know, then we have no money in there to support street and maintenance repairs or street repairs and maintenance as well as anything, you know, we're keeping older equipment. We've budgeted in monies to repair that older equipment. We have a snowplow that's over twenty years old and just recently broke. But that's just what we have to do in order to meet the requirements. So as I said, you've, you've got a balanced budget, you know, while you see line by line, you can adjust those as time goes forward as you need to. Ultimately, we can only increase the bottom line by that seventeen thousand five thirty-two.
So is any way that the police and fire commission can be held to three percent like we are? They have to adjust their budget like we have to.
EMS and fire?
Yes, yeah, EMS and fire, yes, sorry. I mean, we have to stay at three percent, yet they go above and twice that amount.
And last year.
Yeah, and so, you know, and we have to stay it. We have to, we just.
The fact that they're asking for ten thousand more than what we are allowed to even levy, which means that ten thousand dollars is a cut in other services that the village is able to offer. And, and I think Barb brought up a great point when she says, right now, our choice is we fund fire and EMS or we fund our streets. And I mean, at some point, we can't let all the streets go back to gravel.
No.
Not to mention, we will be missing out on twenty-five thousand because we will be over our expenditure. So we pay them the full amount plus twenty-five thousand.
We lose twenty-five.
We lose.
Twenty-five thousand. That's a lot of money out of our budget.
That is.
When we're going line by line going, I'll take five hundred out of here.
That's what it came down to.
Put it in here. Yeah, and it is.
And we're scratching off flowers and we're scratching off.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't know why they can't be held to a three percent just like we are. And then they have to adjust their budget to work into that.
Yep.
One other thing I wanted to add, I by no means intend to give the impression to anyone that I don't feel that fire and EMS is a critical service that we.
None of us.
And I felt that the board did either, but I think it's important for the residents to realize this is not something any of us take lightly. But there are a number of other services that our village has to budget for and provide between trash and streets and parks.
Senior services.
Senior services, everything we do.
Running for elections.
Our services provided to our citizens and.
Don't forget the salt.
We have to, well, right, snowplowing and salt was one of them that I had in my mind earlier today when I was thinking about my notes. And it's just, it's difficult to be able to continue to supply all necessary services with any minimal amount of increases and continue to fund in such a large amount for one line item. So that's, that's where it comes from when I'm preparing budget and keeping in mind what you have to do.
And I think we all feel that way. I'm sure, you know, I'm sure we are, yeah.
In my personal opinion, it feels like we are contracting away our legislative discretion.
Yeah.
Where we are forced into giving what they want and we, we can't vote in a way that, there's no way we can vote to win. Either we don't like firing EMS or we don't like snowplowing and that's, that's not where you.
Or streets or anything.
Well.
Just a hard spot.
I know I'm, this is at risk of really tipping over a can. There's a big issue coming and that is going to be the new building. And I know that's a bonding referendum and that gets beyond what we can do, but you take a, a referendum in the tail end of the school and now we've got one for fire and EMT. And it, that, that is going to be ugly and I know that. And I, I voiced it, but I will continue to do so. There's a meeting this next week, so I'll be raising some issues. Okay, anything else on our budget here?
Do we have a motion on the budget yet?
Yeah, I was going to ask that. I don't know if we do.
No.
Okay. Is, do we have, yeah, referendum? Do we have a refer, do we have a number?
Yep, twenty-nine, twelve.
I'll make a motion to approve the Village of Cambridge Resolution two thousand nineteen dash twelve, thus adopting the two thousand twenty annual village operating budget.
I'll second.
Okay, can we have roll call on this one, please, Lisa?
Is there any other discussion first? Anybody else have anything else you want to say? Passing the budget as we've proposed it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You guys worked long and hard on it, I know.
All right.
Trustee Brynne.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Okay, moving on. Village of Cambridge Resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, revision of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash oh three, amending the two thousand nineteen budget.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, revision of the Resolution two thousand nineteen dash oh three, amending the two thousand and nineteen budget.
I will second that motion.
Okay, discussion. What are we doing here, Lisa?
Yeah, what is happening?
This is the resolution we passed earlier this year, moving things around so that we would qualify for expenditure restraint this year.
Got it.
There are a couple numbers and so forth that changed. Or were the account numbers, so this is just correcting it. So in our documentation, we have the correct account numbers for where that money had been shifted. Anything else?
That's exactly what it's doing. When I was in, working on the budget and everything, I realized that I had put them, I had to create them and I created them in the wrong categories, so I had to correct it.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion? All right, roll call again, please.
Trustee Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Brynne.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right. Now we get to jump down to unfinished business. Contract with Village of McFarland for the senior outreach services.
And as we talked about with the budget, this was, we've talked about it at board level, the increase that McFarland was looking for, it was included in the, the budget. This is the contract that they have with the communities. I did just pass out, received some correspondence from Mary Gelling today with just a couple of questions on it. All of the other communities within the focal group have approved and signed the contract and the financial. So I think the biggest question Mary had, there's a couple of things, one, and we've talked about it, is the hundred eighty day notice. We know that's there because if any one group particularly, if we were to pull out of the focal group, we are the second largest next to McFarland, would have a huge impact, so they need time if anybody is pulling out of the contract. The one paragraph B, Mary had a couple of questions.
I, I had questions on that too, so, because the calculation of the formula and the wording, it, it does contradict each other. And so, is it going to, so I think that absolutely has to be reworked.
And I can talk to Matt tomorrow on that. I think the intent, you know, they did do the five-year rolling average as kind of a compromise rather than, here's the increase at once. They took a five-year average so that we know it's not all at once because the last couple of years have been large increases in the social services. So I can work with him on the clarification on that language that was added, on the underlying language.
So, yeah, so, so the question gets into, are they doing a rolling five years every year? Or, yeah, did they take this five years and it's going to be that going forward unless we agree we're going to change? That's the conflict between what they state, I think, in their opening paragraph and what they state in one B. And so that's what needs to be clarified.
Yeah.
I would think at each year, it would be a rolling fi, let's compare the five-year previous, but that's not what this states, so we need to make sure that's clarified. Then the other thing is they need to say when they're using the term village in here, which village they're referring to.
Yes. And then I was thinking of that as I was reading. There are a couple other villages, but some towns, so they probably use the village as themselves, but yes, those are things that we can easily go in and correct. You know, McFarland and municipality because then it goes with any of the communities signing it.
We had talked about setting up a group and looking at all of our senior services. And if I'm looking at this, the hundred and eighty days that we have to give them notice, that means we'd have to be prepared to move on with anything by June thirtieth. Is there a way that we can get information from McFarland as far as the usage? That they give us yearly, but maybe to get that at the end of four months so that when we're talking about that?
First quarter.
First quarter, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you'd have to go back to last year's.
Well, I don't know. I'd look for a quarterly.
I know they do present us at the end of every year their annual numbers. Laurie will come and do a presentation to the board. We can ask to get quarterly.
I think we should, I think quarterly reports is absolutely reasonable so that we can track where we're at. And then they, they do say following in one E, the annual independent financial audit, a final billing statement will be sent, adjusting overpayment or underpayment. So when is that going to be done? By January thirty-first?
No, and I know Mary asked if there's a, a date. And you can put it, that's like our audit that we do. Typically, yes, you hope to have it done May, June. This year we were later. So we can't necessarily dictate when their audit is going to be finished to have a, a date, but. So I'm not sure how we address that.
Well, I think if we get the quarterly reports, that can help to address and that, because we can anticipate.
Yeah.
Based on, so if they give us, so the, the report that they gave us to calculate how much was used by each of the municipalities, how much of payment then and such, I would expect a report like that every quarter. So then we would be able to estimate at the end of the year, you know, where that's, what that's going to look.
How it's tracking.
Because, right, how that's tracking.
Anything else?
I just want to point out that this.
I just want to point out that this, compared to last year, is about a fourteen thousand dollar increase from what we paid last year. So to further your point, that's another line item that increased by a lot this year.
And it's, and I'll add on to that in, we have had this agreement with McFarland since before I've worked here. The village has always just given a donation. They have never given us, here's the actual cost to run this in the village. As part of the FOCO group, they're the head of the FOCO group. McFarland has been funding the FOCO group. So as they're under the same budget constraints, we're under, their board started talking in the last year that we need the individual communities to pay for the services that they are actually receiving. So it's a big increase this year. Subsequent years, it shouldn't be, you know, unless social services goes through the roof or, you know, but it should hold fairly constant going forward, slight increases. But this is a one time to get us up to the expenditures that are being for our community.
I got a question, does Christiana pay anything into it?
Yes.
Because they do. But can they see an increase, would they be able to see an increase also?
Yes.
Okay. Because I remember years back, it wasn't very much.
We are the only other meal site within the FOCO group, McFarland and us. But it does have the different costs in there of what the communities were in their averages over the years.
Do we get anything from Jefferson County? Because I'm sure there's residents from Jefferson County.
No, residents from Jefferson County do, this is through Dane County.
Okay.
Residents from Dane County, from the community are welcome to come, they pay for their meals. If it was social work, they would not be receiving the social work if they live in Dane, in Jefferson, but they can come to the meals.
Okay. Sort of, yeah, we had this backwards, but that's fine. Well, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the contract with Village of McFarland for senior outreach services in 2020 in the amount of twenty-three thousand forty-five dollars.
With the changes that we talked about?
I'll, I'll make that motion with the changes that were discussed regarding items. One B, a clarification on one E and a clarification on the term for village.
And the quarterly?
Oh, and the quarterly and adding the quarterly statements.
All right, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right. We're pretty close to the cutoff, don't we, do we have, can we just do a vote on this or do we have to go through roll call? Because we're at twenty-three thousand. I'm trying to remember.
This is, we're not voting on money. Money is in the budget. We're voting on the contract.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion and a second for approval of the contract with the Village of McFarland for 2020 senior outreach services. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, carries. Correspondence? None. And I'll just get through the meetings and then we'll get right back to this. Plan commission's going to meet on December 9th, village board, December 10th, library board, December 11th, and water and sewer on December 17th.
I did miss joint law enforcement will also meet on the 10th.
Darn it.
And.
Oh, I'd like to go to it.
December 10th, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and we'll all note that there's only one meeting in the month of December, correct? All right. All right, and then number 12, questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items. Chris?
I would request the staff put a notice of quorum for the fire commission meeting on December 4th. I plan on attending and I don't want to get into a situation where it's a, a quorum. And also can we, is there an issue with having the fire commission listed on our meeting announcements?
Well, I would give a report.
We did just receive the agenda today, I can pass it to board members.
Is that fine? I don't want to.
Yeah, I think it would be important because, I mean, we have representative and it's a public meeting, right?
It's a large, a large portion of our budget.
And, yeah, a big portion of our budget goes there, so I think it would be important for village residents to know when that is.
All right. Anything else then before we bounce back to the foundation grants?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Lisa, the foundation grant request?
Something for us to talk about at the next meeting. A couple ideas have been talked about already, but at our next meeting, we will formulate what we would like to ask for in that grant requested is due at the end of the year, so. And ideas, bring them forward.
Okay, anything else?